Okay, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the May 18th, 2017 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. Anyone in the audience, please make sure you've got your electronic devices silenced, laptops or cellphones. And with that, Heather, will you please call the roll?
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee is absent. Lisa Anderson.
Here.
Iris Mahdi Gibson.
Here.
And Micah Estes.
Estes, here.
All right. So we have no minutes to approve at this meeting, and so we'll move right into our public comment period before we move to our public hearing. And the public comment period is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak about any topic that's not on tonight's agenda. And tonight's agenda item is a public hearing on the rezon request for Area 10 and 11 of the Cordada neighborhood. So if you want to talk about anything else, now is your opportunity. Come up to the mic for three minutes, and we will hear your thoughts. Anybody? Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period. And before we move into our public hearing, Commissioner Crooks has a comment.
If I may, I'd like to make a request tonight. For your information, I have been very involved in the Parks-Cordada Development Steering Committee. I've attended all the meetings. In fact, within the last couple of weeks, we had a phasing meeting, which I was pleased to participate in. Based upon that information, I think it best that I recuse myself from tonight's hearing.
All right, well, appreciate your comments and sharing that with us, and I think it's appropriate, and so I will honor that request, and Commissioner Crooks will be recused from this meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good evening. Okay, so with that, we will continue, and so we're going to move right into our public hearing. Our public hearing tonight is on the rezon request that I mentioned earlier, and I think we're going to have a presentation from Lisa. It is a public hearing, so there will be opportunity for public comment. We're going to do the presentation, and then have a commission discussion, and then new comment at the end. And so with that, Lisa, take it away.
Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the City of Bellingham Planning Department. And as you stated, this is a rezon for the Cordada Community Park. So tonight's presentation, I'll just briefly be covering the proposal itself, the Planning Commission's role, a little bit of background information, show you a site map, talk a little bit about the criteria and analysis that staff conducted, and any public comments we've received, and then finish up with our recommendation. So this rezon is for 20.6 acres in the Cordada neighborhood for a new city park. The existing zoning is industrial-light planned within Area 10 and commercial-industrial-residential multi-mixed planned within Area 11, and the proposed zoning is public. The Planning Commission's role for a Type 6 process is that you hold this public hearing tonight, and then issue findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendations to the City Council. And then the City Council will also hold a public hearing and adopt the final ordinance. A little bit of background on the site. In 2009, Area 11 was rezoned from industrial to its current mixed-use zoning. In 2010, the Cordada neighborhood was formed. In 2015, the city purchased this property. In November of 2016, the docket of comprehensive plan amendments was approved by City Council, and then this proposal was added to that docket by City Council in January 2017. And then in March of 2017, the neighborhood meeting was held for this project. Just to show you the site, orient you a little bit. This is Cordada Parkway, and outlined in pink is the 20.6-acre park. This area right here is located in Area 10, and this part is located in Area 11. Along with the rezon, there will be some text amendments to the BMC to remove a requirement that a site plan that would be consistent with the conceptual master plan be submitted for all of Area 11, because that conceptual master plan does not currently include the park, so we need to have that requirement removed in order for the park to move forward. And then the park would become a new area, which would be Area 22 within the Cordada neighborhood. This project meets the BMC criteria, as you can see in the staff report, for comprehensive plan amendments as well as rezones. Just a little bit of highlights on the analysis. It does support the comprehensive plan, and in particular, the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan includes this park as a future park. It also supports the Growth Management Act's goals of open space and recreation. It follows the intent of the public designation, which is really intended for government-related uses. It addresses changing circumstances in that the city purchased the property in 2015. The Greenways 4 levy was passed in November 2016, and it's included in the 2017-2018 budget. The park will provide recreational opportunities in an area that's currently underserved by city parks, and it will result in a less intense use than what would currently be allowed under existing zoning, thereby including better protection of the site's environmental We received no written comments prior to the publication of the meeting packet or prior to this meeting. Two members of the public did attend the neighborhood meeting and were supportive of the park. We did have several phone calls, mostly messages left from one member of the public who was concerned about wildlife and wildlife habitat on the property, and we assured her by leaving a message with her that we'll follow all state, federal, and local laws on that. And then when the project itself comes through with the master plan, it will go to City Council, and it will also be required to go through the SEPA process and follow all rules as well. So with that, the staff's recommendation is approval, and if the Planning Commission agrees, you should approve the findings as shown in the staff report, and the City Council Public Hearing will take place on July 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. So I thought about this a little bit, actually, while Lisa was talking, and I think it would be appropriate, since this is a public hearing, to take public testimony at this point before we deliberate, so that we can hear everyone, anyone's thoughts who wants to contribute before we start discussing it. So I think before we have commission discussion, let's open up the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and so I'll ask anyone who's in attendance if they'd like to speak on this topic. You can, same deal, you can come up to the mic, you can share your thoughts with us, and just state your name and address for the record. Does anybody have any comment on the rezon? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing and move into commission discussion. Does anybody have any questions, thoughts, anything they want to share? Iris?
I have two questions. One, and I'm not sure, tell me if this is not an appropriate question for our purview, but from an accessibility standpoint, in terms of the placement of the park in the Cordada neighborhood, it seems like it may not be the best place for a park, because it's not very centrally located, and I'm wondering, because the city's limited in how many parks we can create, is there a discussion to be had about, is this the best place to put a park in a neighborhood, or is that probably not part of this?
Yeah, probably not. I mean, the city purchased the property in 2015 explicitly for this purpose, so...
We probably can't influence that decision at this point, but maybe can you shed some light on why the city chose that location?
Jonathan would probably be a better person.
Maybe briefly?
This is Jonathan Chalk with the Parks Department.
Kind of what, is that might help answer that question, Iris? Yeah.
I wasn't involved in the purchase of the property, and developable property is kind of at a premium in North Bellingham, and so this property came available, and it was an opportunity that Parks Recreation took and purchased it.
I have one more question.
Yeah, you bet.
One of the benefits of that location seems to be the buffer between, that it creates a further buffer between the residential neighborhoods and Meridian, right on the other side of that Area 31. And I was wondering if you knew how large that Area 31 sort of buffer of trees that's right next to, I guess it would be the back of the park.
I don't know. Sorry.
How big is it again? It's 20 acres? It almost looks like it's like the same size on the map, almost the same depth, but I don't know how far linearly that is. Anybody else? Garrett?
I see a board back there. Are we seeing any kind of preliminary planning on this, or has there been any plans put together?
We have a draft master plan that has gone through several public sessions, and I brought it here just in case someone wanted to see it.
Yeah, I'd love to see it. Is that something that was part of the presentation, or?
Yeah, I asked beforehand, and he grabbed it.
Okay.
I don't think it was part of it, but if you want to take a minute to show us, and that you feel that's appropriate, I think it'd be interesting.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not part of our, we're not like making any decisions on it, as a part of this. Yeah, maybe over here. Is that too big to fit on the overhead projector?
It's too big with the camera.
Do you want to point anything out for them?
I'm getting set in my head. North is towards me, and Cordada is along this way, and this property on the right of, actually to the south of the park, is zone commercial and mixed, and you know, it's all part of that Area 11 area. And so the projects going forward, trying to coordinate the development of the park with adjacent development, especially with this part here and this industrial, and the big thing is to coordinate, like where exactly this north-south trail connector is to be located in. So that's something that was specifically required in the public or the planned urban And there's also a plan for an east-west trail connection. Of course, as you, if you go onto the site, you'll see that there's a large wetland there, and we still need to resolve some east-west connecting issues, you know, towards Meridian. So it may be that people who want to have that east-west connection will need to circle around on Horton. But in the big picture, this has been a really challenging project. There's about 14 acres of unencumbered, or rather, of encumbered property here. That's wetland buffers and, let me back up, I want to get, I want to make sure that that's There's about four acres of unencumbered area, so strike what I said before, four acres is unencumbered, all the rest is wetland, wetland buffers, and so we've really had to work around it. That sort of explains how it is that the plan kind of clusters areas here and here, and then connects between them with these trails. And that's mainly because this is where the unencumbered areas are located, and that goes into that strategy of mitigation sequencing, of avoiding impacts, reduction of impacts, and mitigation of impacts. And so let me walk you through what exactly we're proposing on this project. So we have two activity areas, and the public was really interested in making it available for all ages, so there's an adult's exercise area, there's a children's playground, there's a reservable picnic shelter, similar to what we have at Squawlicum Creek Park and Cornwall Park. Appropriate amount of parking associated with each play node, restrooms, maintenance areas, and we're still trying to work through exactly, we'll figure this out during the design phase, adult's exercise, a parkour kind of course, if you know what parkour is, it's like a lot of lunging and moving, quick movements, and a pump track, similar to what recently went into Watkins Falls Park, off of Electric. And then we have this trail system that's kind of configured to allow for emergency access off of Cordada Parkway, and once this node gets in, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in a moment, that we anticipate that a fire engine or some other kind of emergency access, or emergency vehicle would be able to circle all the way around here and finally get out that way. So that kind of addresses the issue with homeless camps possibly forming around here, and there is a fire danger there, so it definitely addresses the emergency access issue. We also have located in this area, it's kind of like an open play field, it's similar to what we have at Squawlicum Creek Park. It's about 360 feet by about 120 feet, right here, see? And that's intended for open play, kite flying, pickup soccer, just for practice, that kind of a thing. It's really not large enough to do any kind of competitive sports, but it's pretty cool, and it's got picnic area located there. This master plan doesn't show a lot of details, intended to be a coarse-grained detail, but we anticipate having plenty of seating, plenty of benches, and like I said before, this is intended for all ages, including the elderly, and we anticipate that folks might want to sit down and rest a bit as they're walking along. So on the south side, we're anticipating a park pavilion, and we haven't quite designed that yet, but we anticipate that would be like a single floor, have indoor restrooms with access exteriorly, and a meeting space similar to the Fairhaven Pavilion, something around that kind of size, maybe even a living roof. And then sport courts here, basketball court and four pickleball courts. Pickleball is becoming very popular, and so we'll see how it goes. I think it's probably going to remain popular for the long term with the aging population. And of course, we have a picnic shelter with some picnic tables and the like located around here, and we've had to work around this interior parcel there. We don't own that yet. We'd like to own it, and we're negotiating with the Cordada Business Park Association for that parcel there, and we're anticipating the only development would be path crossing it with a bridge, and this bridge has some cool opportunities with it for viewing wildlife or songbirds, and we haven't worked out the details, but that will be included in there. And before I close, I think there's two things that I haven't brought up yet. I'm going to swing you back in this direction. Public was very interested in a spray park, and so in Phase 1, we're going to be talking about which of these four activities does the community really want. The master plan shows three, and the master plan will include a note about considering spray park in the future. These kinds of things are very expensive, and so, you know, I don't know how it's going to end up. The second thing that I want to talk about is that I've met with the Cordada Design Review Committee, and there are some issues that we're addressing about how the park fronts on the road and increasing enhanced public pedestrian access into the park, and we have some fuzzy ideas of how we can make that work, but we have three locations of these enhanced public access areas, and if you can imagine that they could be white spots in the sidewalk, where you have sculptural kind of seating, or maybe a special kind of planting, something that celebrates entry into the park. So we're working through that detail. It's going to be really great, and I think that's probably enough for now.
Yeah, thank you. That was very informative. Iris?
That was really exciting. Thank you. I had two questions, just quickly, was, one was, I couldn't tell from the map, can you access the, will people be able to access the park from Meridian on West Stewart Road? To go through from Meridian to where the park would be? Oh, okay.
Answer is no.
Oh, okay, so folks on the other side of the park wouldn't, it's sort of that access from the front side only?
Yeah, the access off of Stewart would be provided through the RJ, or rather, the, let's see what that, it's Trillium L, I'll say, I think it is.
RJ.
RJ Group, yeah. But nothing directly from Meridian.
Okay. And then my other question was if you knew, if there's, are there bus stops that go that far out, Cordada? I thought you might know as well.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the parcel in the middle, which, some of which you addressed. There's a note in the, one of the staff notes about sewer access existing in the parcel that's not yet purchased. Is sewer access to the park contingent on that purchase happening, or is there another way to get that if for some reason that purchase can't happen?
Yeah, there's another way that we can serve the park with sewer service, and it's not necessarily with that little service that exists in that Cordada Business Park Association property. Yeah, we can make that connection.
So this rezon does not change, it leaves that unpurchased parcel in Area 10?
Correct.
Would a future rezon be needed when that purchase happens?
I don't know if it'd be needed, but I can see us asking for a rezon. We're not asking for rezon right now, because we don't own the property.
Sure, that's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Mine's just more of a comment. Happy to see this happening, or hoping that it's going to happen. That area really needs parks, and I think Greenways passing, the public has really made it well-known through the comprehensive plan part, design, that it's very underserved area of Bellingham, and so, and I know property land is not cheap, and it's hard to acquire, especially a large enough chunk of land to be able to serve multiple different interests. So, you know, good for the city for coming up with this. I think hopefully eventually we'll have two or three more parcels out in that area, and I'm imagining you guys are working towards that. Happy to see it. I hope you do get that additional parcel, because I think the connectivity will be very important. That's an odd chunk of land to have in the middle, especially for it to be industrial. And I am always concerned about industrial property available in the city because of the employment sector, and don't like the idea of giving it up lightly, but when you think of the public good, parks do our community a tremendous amount of good, and so, you know, weighing the two together, I think you guys are doing a good job, so I definitely support this.
Thank you. Who else? I had a couple of questions. No public comment on this. I'm sure you engaged, like John, like you said, with the Cordada Design Review Committee. I would have thought there would have been more comment from the Cordada neighborhood, being excited about this. I know when we went through the comprehensive plan process, we had like the neighborhood association and a number of individuals from Cordada come in and comment particularly on the need for a park. Do you know why there was like a lack of interest at this stage?
I don't, other than the fact that they've been, I know the Parks Department has been really involved with the neighborhood in going through the master planning process.
So maybe they just, they feel like it's all, the ship sailed, and it's...
That was sort of what I was thinking, was this is more of a procedural, you know, hurdle that needs to be gotten through to get to the park itself, and when they're already looking at the master plan and the design of it.
That makes sense.
So they've been very involved with that.
Just always a mystery to me, because it's so varied, the amount of public comment we receive on different things, and you expect some, and you don't expect others, and then you never know, so cares. The other question I had is related to that central piece. That piece is mostly wetland, and it's like all wetland, and I did some work in, on stormwater out in Cordada years ago, and that piece is also an open space tract? Like it's not, it's not designed for development, and so I'm wondering what the motivation would be for the city to spend money on it, when it's basically never going to be developed, and it's all wetland, so you really can't put anything there either. Is there like a reason to have it underlying this thing? Nicole, it looks like you want to say something?
Nicole Oliver, I'm the Parks Development Manager. That parcel is going to be ours. They already voted to give it to us, it's just a matter of them going through the paperwork, I think.
Are they giving it, giving it to the city?
I'm not sure. We really haven't fully negotiated, there's, the committee voted to make it so, there's a development agreement that allows both Janicki's property to the south and the park to use it for stormwater.
Yeah.
So it's not like it's worth anything. It's a wetland that already is going to be used for stormwater conveyance, so...
It's owned...
Just a matter of...
Going through the motions to get it? Mike, you asked, it's owned by the Cordada Business Focus Association?
And we don't need to rezon it, that's the other thing, because it already allows park, that parcel.
That parcel is...
Don't need to rezon it.
I guess I would say, I would hope that we wouldn't spend a lot of money on it as a community.
No.
That would be, I think that would be a good use of funds, because if we, if they asked for a ton of money, we'd just say, "You can just keep it, it'll be exactly how it is today forever."
We do not intend to spend a lot of money on it.
The other, the other part of it, though, is if we know we're getting it, wouldn't it make sense to throw in the rezon now?
You can't rezon somebody else's property.
But, I mean, if they're on board, can't they, was there any effort to like ask them if they wanted to participate in the rezon, knowing all this was going down?
Well, it already allows a park. The underlying zoning of that particular parcel, we will not be seeking a rezon of it, because it already allows a park. Almost every place in town, except for this parcel, allows a park, if you want to do a park, but because of the very specific zoning on this parcel, it didn't. That's why we're here. Usually, you can build a park anywhere.
Gotcha.
Except here, where we want to build one.
Well, thank you. I just, I knew what it was like, and I wondered what, why we were going after it, but that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the last question was related to mitigation. Because it's a big wetland, it's got big buffers, looking at the master plan map, obviously development's going to occur in the buffers, is the city doing anything to mitigate for those impacts? And does that mean that we're going to be setting aside chunks of this park in like, for passive recreation, you know, like looking at it, fence it off, that kind of thing?
Well, we've taken a lot of pains to avoid impacts, direct impacts to the wetlands, and we're down like to tenths of an acre in terms of actual direct impacts to the wellens, and it's not clear to me whether those impacts can be mitigated on-site. I've been told that not all of the impacts can be mitigated. There'd be impacts to wetland or wetland buffer, but we can mitigate most of the impacts to the wetland buffer on-site, and some of that mitigation will take the form of some shrubs along the trails to protect, you know, the resource, and maybe some strategically located split rail fence, and a lot of our wetland mitigation strategy will happen along the south edge and along the southeast edge. We are trying to maintain the views to the chucka nuts, which, and we're trying to keep most of the park in this open rolling condition, which is, you know, the neighbors really like that, and there are a few parks that have that kind of a character, so we're trying to do what we can to maintain the integrity of that whole character. And then, of course, there are other kinds of mitigation strategies, like dog waste stations, signage, rule signs, people, reminding people to pick up after their dogs, and then there's the stormwater treatment for runoff from pollution generating surfaces and that kind of thing.
Thank you. Any else have comments or questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve, recommend approval of the rezon areas 10 and 11, Cordada Neighborhood, as proposed in the May 18 staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And the motion was to move to recommend approval of the rezon of areas 10 and 11, as stated in the May 18 staff report. Correct?
Correct.
Any discussion on it?
I have a comment, I just...
Yeah, definitely, this is the time.
We've been watching parks acquisition in this part of town for, you know, quite a while, and seeing that this develop and the interaction with the neighborhoods has been really nice. We didn't get a lot of public comment here today, but we have had a ton of public comment about the need for parks.
Agreed.
And I hope that, because I'm not as familiar with the site, you know, the site's specific characteristics, but I'm hoping that there's good trail corridors and connectivity between existing trail systems that are out there. I know finding land that's suitable for this kind of development is difficult, you've got to kind of take what you can get, but it looks like a great park, it's got a good size. I'm excited about it.
Yeah. Well, I'd just like to say, I agree, I agree with that wholeheartedly, and also with Lisa's comments earlier about the importance of it, and also... comments earlier about the importance of it, and also appreciate the staff report, Lisa, because I think it makes it easy for us, because it really addresses each of the criteria, both the rezone and the comprehensive plan criteria really clearly, and so that, you know, that's ultimately what we're reviewing, and I think it's pretty clear that it's consistent with all of those. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's have a vote. So I'm going to restate the motion. It was to move to recommend approval to rezone Areas 10 and 11, Cordada Neighborhood, as described in the May 18 staff report. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. And so with that, we will close the public hearing on this topic. Thank you, Jonathan, for presenting, and additional feedback, and Lisa as well, and Nicole. We have nothing else. Any, Greg, you're here, do you want to say anything? Any new business to tell us about? I know we got June off, it looks like.
Yes, Greg, I think the Department enjoys June. You're going to start being busy again in July. We've got ADU ordinance coming forward, subdivision ordinance, the continuation of your work on that, commercial zoning regulations, which we talked about at the last meeting, and the Community College's institutional master plan are all going to be, are all lined up here for the summer and fall. And then I wanted to remind you that the hearing on the appeal of the city's comprehensive plan will take place May 31 in this very room at 9:00 in the morning. So if you've never been to a Growth Management Hearing's Board hearing, I would encourage you to come down and watch.
What was the date and time of that again?
9:00.
On?
May 31st.
May 31st. Thank you. Garrett?
Could you, could you remind us about our role with the institutional master plan with regards to Walkem? Because I remember when we looked at the last housing project at Western, there was, it felt different. And what's our role in the process of helping with that plan?
An institutional master plan is an overlay zone, so it overlays the university's campus, the hospital campus. It's actually just, it's like an urban village master plan, it's a more detailed look at a specific area, and your role is the same as it is in the urban village plans, and that's to review it against the criteria and make a recommendation to council.
So ultimately it's adopted via ordinance?
Yes.
And then becomes like a component of the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Just like, okay.
Yeah, so once it's adopted, then that, that plan takes precedent with all design review, or all projects that are proposed within that overlay district, yeah.
Interesting. Anybody have any other questions? All right, thank you, Greg. Thank you, everybody. I'm excited about this, too. With that, we will adjourn.